Good evening.
Good evening.
We'll start tonight off with prayer led by myself, Mayor Moore, and I'll also do the pledge. Those who would like to participate, please do so. Most gracious heavenly Father, we come for you tonight with hardened hearts to make the decisions for the city. We ask that you guide us, keep us focused on the mission. The mission is the people. Get all the personalities out of the way, but let us walk into our new coming. It's a new season, and you'll hear me saying it over and over. It's a new season. We want to walk into the newness, and we want to receive our anointing that is coming to us. God look over our city manager, his staff, and our staff and the citizens of Saginaw. Give them rest at night, not worries. Father, we ask that you just come down and shower with this city with your love. Continue to bless us. Continue to bless all nine sitting in front of you at the throne right now. Father, we ask these things in my name, Jesus.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I am always ahead of myself. I get excited when I come into these chambers and see people in the chamber with me. So I just want to say again, good evening. This is a public meeting, and the audience is asked to refrain, to refrain, to be quiet and to speak when it is your turn to speak. I got some housekeeping to do. Council members, let's collect them phones to vibrate. My phone fell in the toilet today, so I need a new one. So if you, if you, your phone go off, it's fine, it's fine, okay? I know you gotta have some humor in this, okay? You can't just sit here like it ain't nothing happening. You gotta make it fun. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. What call will be Lamar Sylvia?
Roll call.
Oh, present.
Councilmember Williams.
Present.
Member Bench.
Present.
April Temballs.
Present.
Councilmember Scherzer.
Present.
Councilmember Ostash.
Present.
Councilmember Flores.
Present.
Councilmember Copeland.
Present.
Mayor Moore.
Present.
We have nine members present, zero absent. And Mayor, I do not have any announcements this evening, so that will take us to public input.
I'd like to welcome to all those who are signed up to address this council tonight, please speak slowly and clearly so that we don't miss what you have to say. You will be called to the podium by the clerk, the city clerk, I'm sorry. Speakers are allowed three minutes to speak, which will be timed by the clerk. Make sure you cover your main point. Once again, we need to be courteous to one another. We need not be booing, clapping, none of that, none of that. This is still a meeting, and if you want to talk about the open meeting act, it doesn't allow all of that. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Our first speaker tonight is Chris Kubiak. Do not see him in the audience. Let's go to Audrey Beatty. I don't see her either. Let's go to Cecilia Olvera.
Hello, for those of you who don't know me, my name is Cecilia Olvera. I live in the Fairground neighborhood of Saginaw. I am an ARPA program manager for the city of Detroit, and previously I was a housing counselor and a Cities for Financial Empowerment Center coach. I have HUD training and three and a half years of foreclosure prevention experience. Now, um, I know folks come here a lot to voice their pan, ARPA, but I'm here today to implore you all to explore using ARPA funds towards stabilizing the housing stability of Saginaw. Stable housing is a basic need, and without basic needs being covered, we cannot even begin to dream about a revitalization. Like many people, I fear that Saginaw does not have the ability to spend these funds or the ability to spend them in a way that will be truly impactful. When I look out my window, I see three back-to-back empty lots that I'm sure once upon a time beautiful homes used to stand there. I'm here today to start the conversation on how we can prevent this and preserve our existing housing stock. I know a common response to these suggestions are to go to the land bank meetings, which I fully intend to do, but their meetings are a little less nine-to-five friendly. But we can participate by exploring some of these options, like increasing the awareness of the property tax exemption, including documents like the PRE and the 4506 statement and a written statement in that application, adding guidelines for some of the, income guidelines for some of the lesser exemptions, using residential foreclosure data to complement the exemption and the Michigan Homeowners Assistance Fund, which will launch later this quarter, looking at how we can implement programs, like the Neighbor Neighbor Program to survey the housing needs of residents, Make It Home to assist renters and foreclosed properties, and workshops for Saginaw residents. I know that there's not a lot of manpower behind this kind of work, but I'm here today to offer myself, my time, and my talents. Lastly, I'm not just gonna come here and complain. I'm gonna host a virtual property tax exemption workshop on February 19th at 6:00 PM. I'm gonna post this on my social media, which some of you I am friends with, sometime by tomorrow evening, and I ask everyone here today to share it with their networks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Phillip Graves.
Hi, members of council. I am here on behalf of your Saginaw police officers. As the president of the Saginaw Police Officers Association, I want to make a formal request that the city consider using a portion of the permissible funds, the American Rescue Plans Act as legislated by Congress, for hazard pay for the officers of the Saginaw Police Department. The funding may be used for workers performing essential work during the COVID-19 public health emergency by providing premium pay to eligible workers in the amount of up to $25,000 each. The officers of the Saginaw Police Department are eligible essential workers. At the beginning of COVID, when everything was still very unknown, your police officers still came to work while most other businesses were shut down. These officers were placed at risk by responding to thousands of calls for service and having countless contacts with the general public. A number of your officers and their families contracted COVID during the time, and we haven't had one officer that spent multiple months in the hospital. Some government entities demonstrated their appreciation for their sacrifices made and the hard work performed by their political partners already, and providing them multiple different amounts, and some of them nearly the full amount. So with that said, I would just would like to point out to you how hard your Saginaw Police Officers worked. Last year alone, they worked almost 11,000 hours of overtime. Over 46,000 calls for service were taken, and almost 3,000 cases were assigned to detectives. You heard those numbers right. That was all done on the backs of a very understaffed department, with a lot of times only five officers patrolling the entire city at a time. I'm no mathematician, but that is a whole lot of calls for service taken by not a whole lot of officers. I can't, I can put an amount on what your officers deserve as recognition, but I think that's your job. I would, however, challenge you to find another agency that put up numbers like that, responded to that many calls for service, and worked that many hours of overtime with the unlimited amount of manpower your Saginaw Police Department has. These officers worked their butts off. Chief Ruth has sent a wish list to city management regarding ARPA funds, including hazard pay a few weeks ago, and that wish list was an amount he requested that he thinks his officers deserve. I would implore you to review that request. I did include a proposal drawn up by our business agent with the Police Officers Association of Michigan, and you should all have that in front of you. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Our next speaker is April Williams.
Good afternoon, City Council Mayor. I'm here today to speak a little bit on my city. Excuse me, I love my city, Saginaw. And with that being said, by me saying that, I feel like I need to step out and do some things for my city. That's volunteer my time. I have been volunteering my time for quite some time in Saginaw. I've been living in Saginaw, I'm 54, I've been living in Saginaw for 54 years, and I've been volunteering my time, I would say half of that. What I mean by that is I have opened up one of my homes for faxing, I'm a notary, by the way. I notarize people's papers for free. I fax, print, help them with things that they don't quite understand. I also feed people, I also do bike giveaways, I also do coat giveaways, and this summer I did pop-up shops. For you all that might don't know what pop-up shop is, it's for our local Saginaw businesses that are trying to start and get out here and promote their self. I opened up my home for that also. So I will be doing another pop-up and a food giveaway, I'm trying to get that together for this month. And it's a new season, like the mayor is saying, okay? It's a new season, and I want to be in that season, and I want to be out here helping, if I can, volunteering my time for whatever I can, because that's what means the most to me, okay? I feel like my city is everything, but I need help. I can't do it all by myself. I don't mind doing it, I love doing it, but I need some help to do it. So I'm asking that, for some help to do that. I will be getting my flyers and everything together, like I said, for February, and I'm thinking around the end of February or something, I'll be doing a food giveaway, and I like, I do this also, my mom started me with this, for the rescue mission. She always used to tell me, April, if you got $20, $25, $10, get you a money order and take it to the rescue mission. You don't know how many people you can help. I used to get deodorant, soap, socks, and all, everything like that, and just take it to the church, because they do their giveaways. So I just like to help. I don't have that much. Thank you.
Sorry, I motion to extend your time for 45 seconds.
Second. They moved the second.
I don't have that much, but I feel like what I do have, oh, I forgot, I'm sorry.
Let's take a vote. I know, I was getting ready to. Everybody jumped the gun. The racist is give it to the swiftest, is give it to the one who endures to the end. Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, now we're waiting on the clerk.
Ready.
Okay, I just want to say that I just want to help my city. It's a new season, so I would love to see some of you guys' faces, and I will let everybody know when that date is set, to come out and see some of the new businesses, some of the people in our community that are trying to make, make it better also. So I appreciate your time, thank you guys, have a good night.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, your next order of business is remarks of council.
Council, you have three minutes. Please use your time wisely and express what you want to express. Tonight, we will begin with Councilman Copeland. Brain fart.
All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome. One, I want to say thank you to our public speakers. I'm sure the city staff will get back with you. Happy Monday to you all, this snowy Monday, happy Monday to you. Which leads me, I want to say thank you to Mr. Phil Carwatt and his team, as they are out even now, plowing, making sure, hopefully, we can get some more salt, but I want to say thank you, knowing that the city and its staff is understaffed, they are still making sure to get out there, and I appreciate you all for that. Hopefully, I don't slide on my way home. All right, so again, thank you, Phil, and your team, for what you're doing. Just as a reminder, also, our city is hiring. You can go to our city website if you're interested in some of the positions that we have available, I encourage you to apply. Happy one-year anniversary to Swag Magazine. I'm excited just to seeing these young people, we're even out at the MLK March this past Monday, just standing out there, just believing in voting rights, secure. Remember to decline to sign, decline to sign, decline to sign. Also, the Youth Explosion hosted by Women of Colors will be January 29th at 12:00 noon. This is for ages 12 and older. If you have some young people that need to get out, they need something to do, they have a three-time, I believe Emmy Award winner from the city of Saginaw that will be there for, is it Emmy? Oh, or Golden Globe, it's something, it's an award he has, it's a national award, but he's coming, and please forgive me, but he's coming to Saginaw, he's Saginaw's own. So I encourage you, if you have some young people that are 12 and older, get them out there, it's gonna be at the Learn to Earn Academy, please get them out there. And as I close, this is gonna be a fast one, today I was just surfing Twitter, and there was something that stuck out to me that really just stuck with me the whole day till the end of work, and it said, "Hope has two beautiful daughters, their names are anger and courage." Anger at the way things are, and courage to see that they do not remain as they are. That is by St. Augustine of Hippo. And that really just stuck with me, because as we are continuing to have these conversations about ARPA, we hear the pain, we hear the frustration, we hear the anger, we hear the excitement, but the one thing that really just stuck out to me was that ending portion about courage. As we move forward in this city, our mayor said it's a new season, it's a new day, it's gonna take courage. But the one thing I want to remind us is to hope again. With courage comes hope. It's easy to remember and talk about the issues, but it's greater to have hope. So even if you, it was great hearing Ms. Williams talk about she loves her city, there's others who love our city, but there were some who's been hurt, and the one thing I will ask you tonight is, hope again. As we're progressing, as we're talking more about ARPA, my main message to you, you might as well call me a hope dealer, because I want us to hope again in our city. Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Monique Silvy.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank our speakers. I'd like to thank you all for coming to tonight's council meeting. It is such a joy and a privilege when I see faces out in the audience, so to speak, because this is getting better and better and better. You all are looking to your city council persons for leadership and guidance, and I really appreciate that you appreciate that. And I would also like to say happy New Year. This is our first time meeting and seeing a lot of you all for the New Year. So that concludes me for right now. Have a great day.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. First thing, I would like to thank you for our speakers coming forward tonight. Second, the Saginaw Police Department's Front Porch Roll Call, they're looking for, and this is going out to anyone who's watching, they're looking for places to host indoors throughout the year, especially during the cold months, and then during the summertime, if it's raining or whatnot, but they need facilities in order to host. So if you are someone who's watching, someone here that has an indoor facility and would be interested in hosting a Front Porch Roll Call, that would be great, it's very beneficial for the city as a whole. Second thing, on a personal note, I want to encourage anyone, I'm not, if you are anti-mask or anti-vax, whatever, I just went through my second bout of COVID, and it was so great in comparison to the first time. I've been vaccinated, obviously, I've had it before, but the, I honestly feel like, because I've had it before and I'm vaccinated, that it made this time really tough, I only had a cough, which, because I was very, because the first time was really, really bad. So I would encourage you to become vaccinated if you have not, if that actually helps, because I don't know, I'm just saying from my personal experience, I think it did, in comparison. But stay healthy, and also, 2022, spend this year picking yourself up. A lot of times, we get down on ourselves, things, our circumstances and everything can seem very hard, very heavy, but spend 2022 giving us, speaking positive affirmations to yourself, just being positive all the way around, bringing positive vibes to you. But just pick yourself up in 2022, so you can go on to 2023, I mean, head strong. That's it.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Bitch.
Well, thank you and good evening. I want to thank our public speakers all for being here. Ms. Williams, it's wonderful to hear all of the things that you're doing for the community, and it's appreciated, because we need people like yourself willing to volunteer and serve, and the same goes to you, Ms. Olvera. Ms. Olvera does the Local Government 101 videos with me, in addition to all of the other things that she's doing currently and trying to start doing here in the community, and I would like to hear more about your ideas for that, and I have invited her to be a part of our Land Bank Work Group, because as she had mentioned, the land bank meetings are not necessarily easy for the average person to attend. So we are, I'm looking forward to her input and her expertise and background being a part of those conversations, and to just, I have, as far as I know, I have not tested positive for COVID, thank God, many of the times I've gone and tested, but I'm glad you're all right, Reggie, because this is not fun for anybody, but I would add as well, in addition to getting your booster or your vaccine, consider signing up through the U.S. Postal Service. Every household gets four free masks, and they're expensive, when you run out, the box of them are expensive, and 95s are pricey, so you can find that on the U.S. Postal Service website, and if you find me on Facebook or my social media, I've shared that information there, and I'm sure many of the other councilmembers have as well, but please consider wearing a mask and making sure that you're boosted and vaccinated, and thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Scherzer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too want to say welcome and thank you to our public speakers and for those in attendance and watching on TV. I always encourage our constituents to speak up and to come and, you know, share your thoughts and opinions on whatever it may be. So thank you to those who came in and for everything that everyone is doing. I want to remind everyone that, please, as the snow has fallen today, please clear a path or three, I don't want to say three feet, but it's probably three feet around your fire hydrant, so the firefighters can get to it. Clear the path for the police officers too, because we do cherish and value our public servants. I am a Crime Stoppers Board member, along with many other things, and I just want to say thank you to the community for stepping up and standing up for what was right. It was all of us and those individuals that had the courage and the bravery to say something that a very senseless crime that happened right before New Year's was solved. I shouldn't say solved. The tip was submitted, and it led to the arrest of an individual that is accused or pending trial or whatever for the crime. So I want to say thank you again to everyone, and please, if you know something, if you see something, say something, because otherwise you're contributing to the problem. It is an anonymous tip line, you don't ever have to share who you are, even if your tip is approved and you get a reward. Nobody knows who you are, so please continue to step up and say and do the right thing, because otherwise our city will never, I don't want to say be good, but will still be in the same cycle of crime, and nobody's saying anything, and nothing ever gets solved. Be a part of the solution, not a part of the problem. Other than that, a few council members had some birthdays that we missed, so happy birthday to Councilman Bill and Councilman Reggie. So that's all I have. I forgot your last name for a minute.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Ostash.
Yes, I can put my glasses on so my glasses don't fog up. Welcome, everybody, it's good to see some folks in the chamber tonight, and welcome to everybody that's watching at home. I can consult my colleague, what he's talking about, I was double vaccinated, did get COVID, very mild symptoms, and then I did choose to get my booster, so I'd like to put that message out there as well. And Councilwoman Bench mentioned that there are masks online, also too, at covidtest.gov, you can get your free COVID rapid testing kits sent right to the house, that is through the U.S. Postal Service as well. I did it, it's quick, it takes about 30 seconds, and I was done. So just want to let everybody know that again, covidtests, that's plural, .gov. Also, over the last two weeks, I had the opportunity to attend our Human Planning Commission, they were doing all the block grants, presentations for the, for the season, and there was five meetings I attended. The presentations were great, and I want to thank all the organizations that come every year looking for funds to keep doing the services that you do for Saginaw, but also I noticed something different this year. This year, the council changed the ordinance for the membership for the commissioners, and I saw a lot of new faces, I saw a fuller table, and even on our agenda tonight, I see more people that are joining the commission. So colleagues, I think the changes that we did to the ordinance is really helping that commission that does a lot of important things in the city. Again, the deadlines are getting near, but Delta College is still taking applications for scholarships, that deadline ends February 2nd, so I just want to let you know about that. Again, too, the Saginaw Community Foundation is also still taking applications for scholarships, that is gonna end on February 15th, and there's a phone number for that, 989-755-0545. And also, if you're looking for something fun to do, Hoy Park has got an event coming up on January 29th, that Skate with the Mascots, that's gonna be from noon to 4:00 PM, there's $2 skate rental, there's a warming house, and from their flyer, free hot chocolate and cookies. So, Mayor, that is all I have.
Thank you so much. Next, we have, next we have Councilman Flores.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Saginaw. I want to echo some of the sentiments I would make by my councilmembers. We did have an arrest that was made for the shooting of Ms. Flynn, that happened on New Year's Eve. We had put that information during the last council meeting, I'm glad that there was an arrest made. There was a pizza giveaway that was given, I believe eight days ago, I went to go get a pizza, but also to kind of celebrate the fact that the community came together to rally around a victim that had been shot, and contributing to her medical bills. It was really great to see the amount of traffic that had generated from that giveaway from Milano's Pizza, so that's always great to see. Myself and the mayor had attended the ALPAC meeting a few days ago, and Mr. Pruitt had pointed out that there was an MSU study that found that where there was a racial disparity with traffic stops with the state police. If anybody wants to see that report, it is on michigan.gov, you know, African Americans make up 13.7% of the Michigan population, but ended up having 22.1% of the traffic stops found in 2022, Hispanics make up 5.1% of the state population, and represented 2.5% of the traffic stops, so there is an issue that the government had highlighted, and we need to continue to look at that and figure out the best way to move forward, so we don't have those types of things happen in the future. So thank you for, Mr. Pruitt, for doing that. I got tested two days ago, I am COVID negative, but if anybody else wants to get a PCR test, please, Monday through Thursday from 8:00 AM to 12:00 noon, or Friday from 8:00 AM to 12:00 AM, go to 1600 North Michigan Avenue. They stuck it all the way up my nose, and that's the first time that ever happened to me, and I coughed, because it was so uncomfortable. But it's important, at this point, I think we all know, even after getting our vaccinations and our boosters, to get tested, so we should all do that regularly. I do that every time I come before a council to make sure that I am not COVID positive. Additionally, CC, thank you for bringing up the fact that we do need to tackle housing issues with this ARPA funds. I think that's important, and everybody here should recognize that we have an opportunity to do so. With the police, I completely agree with you that you have worked beyond what you all have been signed up to do, and that you should be recognized appropriately according to the premium pay that is outlined in the ARPA funds. And then also, just happy 25th birthday to Bill and to Reggie.
25th. I'll take it.
Take it, give him a five-year-old.
Next, we have. Next we have, Mayor Protielvall.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, citizens of the city of Saginaw, uh, people in the audience, uh, I'd like to thank the speakers for coming out speaking this evening, uh, giving us suggestions for what we should be doing with this money and to bring other suggestions in the community that can make everybody, uh, better. Uh, Ms. Oliveras, thank you for bringing in information, I didn't know, um, that you was even here doing that type of work in the city of Saginaw, hopefully maybe somebody can get with you so we can make the citizens better, uh, especially with standing houses, especially considering the fact that we don't, our housing market in the city of Saginaw is dying out. I got people calling me every other day talking about somebody looking for houses. Um, being a board member of the credit union, I know that the housing market is extremely down, uh, people can't even find houses to buy, uh, in the city of Saginaw. Uh, and on that note, uh, I'd like to, uh, report that, uh, the youth bill organization in Saginaw has broken ground on their first house on the corner of 14th and Burt. Um, they acquired at least about 28 lots from, um, the pastor there with their neighborhood, they're planting all those trees and they plan on putting a house on every last one of those lots. You know, this way we can bring more citizens to the city of Saginaw and put them in brand new housing. You know, so there's a lot of things we all can do or get involved in other organizations just trying to make Saginaw a better place and everybody here, I know you, you guys are here for that, for that, to make Saginaw better and we appreciate you, the city council appreciates you and the city of Saginaw appreciates you, even though they don't show it sometime, that we all appreciate the things that you do to make Saginaw a better place to everybody. So keep on doing what you're doing and I really appreciate that. Um, there's another issue that's going on, a lot of people complaining about they don't have jobs and I know, I went to Burger King the other day with my little brother, the Big Brothers program and we got, there was nine cars going through the drive-through, so we figured maybe we would run into the, run into the place and get something. It was only two people in there working, the manager and the other guy that's making the burgers. She said, "I can't get people to come to work." So there's some jobs out there, we know they're all out there and there's a lot of skilled trades jobs out there too. Um, Delta College is putting on skilled trades training programs, they even seen they had a advertisement for Dow Chemical jobs where they trying to pay people to do those jobs there. We know the skilled trades, uh, the pipe fitters, uh, the HVAC people, the electricians, they all looking for bodies to do these jobs. So what we got to do is we got to tell our families, our citizens, our friends, everybody that we know that they need to go get some training. It don't take a year or two years to get training to get some of these high-paying jobs. Some electricians are making a quarter of a million dollars a year doing high-power electrical work and it ain't like they working real well hard because they got so many people out there, they, I saw when he's working on one site, they had eight people watching one guy work, that's all about the safety of the program, so the jobs are out there, so we need to get out there and tell our citizens about them. Thank you.
Good evening. Again, mine's won't be three minutes because my heart is heavy and I'm not going to go through this, so I'd like to thank all of our public speakers. You're why I'm sitting up here, you're the reason that I'm here, because we didn't have anybody speaking. Now you have people speaking and I need your help. I need your help regardless to what you see going on up here, I need your help. So I just want to thank all my public speakers, as always, love you, love you, love you, love you. It's a new season, it's a new day. Fresh anointing is coming our way. We've got to stand up now, it's now or never. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Mayor, your next order of business is reports from the manager.
Yes, City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, so, um, we do have a presentation this evening and, um, just for some background, uh, financial management team and I have been discussing ARPA management for quite some time and with a few council members as well and we know, um, the regulations, reporting, accounting that is required and we did talk last week, or last meeting, a little bit about this, um, but I believe that we do need assistance, uh, with reviewing proposals, interpreting, uh, treasury rules, developing scoring matrix, matrices for proposals and developing internal control, accounting and other requirements. So, um, Yolanda Jones and Lori Brown and I met with, uh, Guide House and Plant Moran, uh, who works as a subcontractor for them some time ago and Yolanda and Lori have continued to meet with, uh, the consultants, uh, to talk about some of our needs. Have received a proposal from, uh, Guide House and I believe that the three of us are in favor of moving forward, but prior to bringing that action to council, we wanted to have, uh, Guide House present, uh, some of the services they offer to, uh, local units of government, particularly with these federal grants. Guide House is, and this is in their proposal as well, but they're currently working with the state of Michigan, Grand Traverse, Band of Ottawa and Chipewa Indians, the city of Detroit, the city of Jackson, the city of Oak, the city of Warren and several counties in Michigan, including Saginaw County, um, on federal grants. So with that, uh, not taking up any, or providing you any more information that they already have in the proposal, I'd ask them to step to the podium, uh, for the presentation.
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
How are you doing? Um, Melissa Castro with Guide House, I'd like to thank, um, the council and, um, Mayor Moore for having us here and everyone else who's here to listen to our proposal about this. Um, gotta admit, it's a little weird, it's been a while since I'm not on Zoom, so it's gonna take me a minute to get used to this. Um, so again, thank you for having us tonight, um, you know, you had some people here, um, you have some great, uh, public people, speakers that came today to talk about their interest in what they want to do with the ARPA funding, so it's great to see that people are already thinking through what the opportunities are to use that funding to help improve things in Saginaw. Um, so we're here to talk today about, um, our Rescue Plan Act services. Those services, as Tim said, were, um, things like how to manage the money, how to determine whether you're, you're meeting the rules, because this is a very big act with a lot of very specific rules and we have a lot of people that, at Guide House, that have spent a lot of time learning those rules. Um, how you're going to manage the funds and then of course, when you have anything of this size and scope, you've got a lot of compliance and reporting that you want to make sure you're hitting the mark on. Um, so our team here today, oh, good, our team here today, um, I have David Cernick with me, he's one of our project managers at Guide House, he's also one of our ARPA fund gurus, um, I'll let him talk a little bit about more himself in a few minutes, but, um, he's going to be here giving you the details of what our, um, our offering entails. Again, my name is Melissa Castro, I recently came to Guide House after 20 years working, um, in state government primarily for the state of Michigan, so, um, I have many years behind me as a public servant and I still feel like a public servant and I take, um, what we do to help the public and to help our cities and our counties and our state government very seriously. Um, I have a lot of background with finance, um, budget, IT and then also procurement, so. Next up, I'm going to talk a little bit about Guide House, I'm not going to spend too much time on this, I want to give you time to really hear about our programs that we offer, but, um, we're an accounting and compliance service, we are, um, 12,000 employees, we have 50 locations globally, we do have locations in both Detroit and Ann Arbor and we have a large amount of staff that is based in Michigan, myself and David included. Um, so we have a lot of national accounting and compliance expertise, as you'll see, we actually advise the U.S. Treasury on things like the ARPA and the CARES Act on internal controls, again, that's managing that risk and making sure when you are, uh, using this money, that you're using it properly and that it's all being accounted for. Um, we've also helped with TARP, which is Troubled Asset Relief. Um, we've also worked with, uh, state of Michigan on their, uh, their risk assessment and monitoring of their funds and we've also worked with FEMA. So we have a lot related here to that, risk compliance, managing these projects and, um, helping you get this money out in a timely fashion, but making sure you're staying within the, the scope of what you're allowed to do. So as you'll see, did I go to, okay, our work, we have a lot of different ranges of work we can do to help you with various programs depending on what you decide to fund. Um, we have a lot of work within the various government sectors, we've got public safety, so you know, someone was talking earlier about what they can do for the police in the area, um, we've got things about education, economic development, how, uh, health and human services, which is always a big one, um, and then environment and sustainability. Our capabilities include grant management and administration, that will be a big portion of what you will be looking at likely with using some of these funds. We also look at organizational design and planning, some strategic planning, change management, business process, IT, so we can do a lot of those different things within the scope of what, um, anyone might be looking to use these funds for. So, lastly, I'm just going to tell you a little bit about our COVID-19 experience. From the time this hit, Guide House was right involved in the middle of it, helping a whole variety of people, especially we had a lot, we have, so we have 40 state, county and city governments, we helped 45 hos- hospital systems, or 45 healthcare systems, which was over 400 hospitals. We've done a ton of work in the state of Michigan, some of which Tim referenced, um, both within the county level, the city level and at the state level, so we are well prepared to help you guys out and more importantly, this is a passion of ours, we believe in Michigan, we believe in our counties and our cities and we want to do what we can to help you guys use this opportunity to use these funds and to be able to, um, get some good things going for your city, so I'm going to turn it over to Dave.
Thank you. Hello, I'm David, uh, happy to be here, um, just to kind of stick with this, I, I currently manage eight different counties in Michigan and advise them on their ARPA spend and kind of walk them through this process so that they can focus on, on working with their citizens, um, and they can stay out of the weeds on this. Um, kind of a sample of what we're looking at is, we already talked about many of the counties and, um, cities in Michigan, um, but overall, we've actually been managed, we're managing right now 11 billion dollars in funding from the federal government for our different governments. Um, but kind of getting into how do we approach this all, um, you know, step one is assessing everything, so what is the strategy? You've got great ideas, I'm sure, coming from your community as we heard today and how do we create a process that you can analyze those programs and make sure that you're getting the best return on every dollar that you've got to spend? Um, then of course, there's a technical assistance, there's a revenue reduction, uh, model, that's a big part of all of this, to figure out how flexible your funds are, so that's kind of step one, which, you know, lays the playing field for how we're going to approach everything. And then step two is, okay, now we've got programs, how do we actually make sure that they're being, um, applied properly, both from a, um, project management standpoint, but also from a compliance standpoint, so how are we reporting on these, how are we collecting the documentation, dotting our i's, crossing our t's? Um, we have a lot of subject matter experts, for instance, in housing, that if we decided we wanted to do a project like that, we'd bring some people in and we'd be able to look at that project and put that up on its feet, um, with the experience we've got from around the country. Just to give you an example of that kind of experience we've got, so on my way up here, I, I'm on a nationwide call every week for our Midwest, our, our Nationwide Center of Excellence for COVID, where we all share what is every other client doing and how can we grow from each other? Um, I also run our Midwest ARPA Working Group, which again, is a little more focused on the Midwest, but the same kind of ideas, sharing ideas, sharing processes so that you can benefit from that. Um, I really want to talk about growing the pie and, and really in response to what's going on here, this is financially, but it's also from an energy and engagement standpoint, so we're not just thinking what can Saginaw do, but how can we bring more people into this party, right? Um, CARES Act was about responding to an emergency in the moment. ARPA is about planning and building something better in the future, right? Responding to our citizens' needs, um, that are related to COVID, but they might have been there beforehand, right? And how can we solve those problems? And I think it's important to think about, what does the state have to offer to this, right? You've got your ARPA money, but there's other things out there, um, what are the not-for-profit partners you might want to bring in? Um, what are your neighboring cities doing and, in this case, the county that we are engaged with and how can you have a bigger impact with these dollars? Um, I'm going to keep it going here. So, um, just big picture, what do we kind of offer and what do we do? Soup to nuts. Everything from just general overview of what are the regulations and I do have all 450 pages sitting on my desk at home that I have spent the last two weeks rereading, to getting into the nitty-gritty of how do we want to, um, build a project management, um, for, for a program we're doing? How do we want to make sure we're collecting all of the proper documentation? So everything kind of from big picture to in the weeds, um, we offer and can be flexible on. And then this is something that I think is really important, is again, not thinking just about ARPA, but what's the full, um, scope look like? So for instance, a new thing that came out in the new rule is you can use your ARPA funds to cover the federal match for anything in the infrastructure bill. So that's taking a small amount of money and maybe turning it into a large amount of money and how do we think through that, right? And so I think about it as a funding stack. You've got ARPA, but you've got the infrastructure bill, which we're tracking as well, um, you've got state programs that are coming out that were involved with as well. Build Back Better, fingers crossed, we get something with that, right? And then of course, there's existing funding with federal government, so, um, and then finally, we map these things, so how do we think through how we're going to spend these dollars and what's eligible for what? So for example, um, we don't want to spend money on, say, tests if we know we could go get money for tests from FEMA or we could get money from tests from the Michigan, you know, the state. So we want to make sure that when you spend your dollars, you're not spending dollars you could have spent elsewhere. Actually, housing's another great example here, there's a lot of other housing programs in ARPA that aren't just in the state and local fiscal recovery fund, which is what we're talking about here today. So just making sure you're not spending money you wish you could have spent differently in hindsight. And that's, that's all we've got here today, um. Do you, if you have any questions, let me know.
Do we have any questions?
So, um, I just want to say, great presentation, thank you for this information, um, especially the information that you shared, that the expertise that you all are bringing. Um, one of the only, one thing I did want to know is your equity experience from working around the nation, what has been your experience in different programs that you all have created or worked with to increase the equity within those communities?
Absolutely, so, first of all, equity is a big part of the bill, it's required, right? You have to look at things through an equity lens, you've got to report on things through an equity lens. Um, so I can say, uh, for instance, right now, we've got a big project in the city of Dayton where we have approached it all through an equity framework that we built specifically for that city. And so, uh, everything is analyzed through that lens, um, I, if I had it with me, I'd go into more details, right? But, but absolutely required, top of mind, um, and it is something that, again, it is, I believe is wonderful, that it is something that was put into this money to make us think about how we spend our dollars differently.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm curious to know how, I'm sorry, somebody has a question, I'm sorry about that.
Did you have a question?
I, I do, but there are other hands that were raised before. Are you going, I can, doesn't matter.
Let's go to Ms.
Okay. Good evening and thank you very much for your presentation, I'm Councilwoman Lamar Sylvia. Um, a couple of questions and, um, one, one question was already answered, but, um, when you speak of other, uh, programs, when you come in, do you let the entity know that, look, maybe you shouldn't spend these dollars here because there's dollars over here, do you let them know that?
Yes, absolutely, so, I, first of all, the relationship we have with any entity is unique, right? So we want to sit down and understand, how do you want to be served and then we'll serve you that way, right? And trust me, I've got clients that just want me to give them a thumbs up, thumbs down, is that a, is that an eligible idea, not if it's a good idea, right? So if you want to know if it's a good idea, we can also offer that, you know? Uh, one of the things, um, you know, one of the things that we try to do is try to, if you ask me a question and I, I'm not going to answer you right away, I'm going to first go back to my team, my nationwide team and I'm going to put it out there, I'm going to say, hey, what do you guys think about this? Let me give you a good example, so, so I had a client once who said, hey, um, we want to spend our money on a, um, uh, we want to separate, um, what is, what's the word I'm looking for, drug testing from our court because we've got too many people coming in and out and that is a COVID problem. And so they wanted to build a separate location for that, well, there was an idea in another place that said, hey, there's funding for a, um, you can get a, basically a mobile health unit, which would cover your screening, but it could also be used for a lot of other things and it costs the same amount. So to your question, we've actually done that in many cases and, and we, we want to make everyone make the best choices possible.
Okay, my other question would be, I was just looking at the different places, so many places that you serve, do you see something, uh, like, I guess I'm sort of looking at, like some comment, like a common thing that maybe is, uh, misunderstood, misconstrued or something like that, just?
The biggest thing that everyone struggles with is the revenue replacement, for sure, um, and, and how that all works and then how they think about the provision of government services, which kind of which kind of gets into the weeds on exactly how it's all spent. That's one thing I run into the most. I would say, I'm going to answer your question a little differently, because I think it's really, really important. The biggest mistake I've seen everyone make is they skip, they skip phase one. They skip the process of thinking through, what are your values? What do you want to do? So that when all the ideas start rushing in, you've got a shared understanding of how you're going to assess them, right? And so, everyone skips that one, they're all like, oh no, maybe we did something wrong, we're not really sure what we're doing, and that's what I would say is the most important thing. And we've talked about that, I think, a little bit of a scoring matrix kind of helps you walk through that, because there will be a lot of pressure as the money starts rolling out, everyone wants it, right? And they all want their projects, and they're all, all their projects are probably great, but as we know, not everything can get funded, right?
Right. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am, you done?
I am, yes, sorry.
Mr. Flores.
Thank you.
So, this is a free service, correct?
No.
How much would it cost?
Generally speaking, we've done anywhere from 1% to 4%. There's a 1% to 4% of the ARPA spend is the cap. So, what we generally do is not to exceed contract, okay? And there is a cap, technically administrative cap, of like 10%, which we would never approach. But it's whatever you want, right? So, because it's time and materials, so, federal government requires a time and materials contract, so it can't be a flat rate, it's got to be per hour. So, we supply you with a set of staff members, and if you decide you just want thumbs up, thumbs down on a project, well, that's going to drastically decrease your cost. If you want full project management on things, that's going to increase your cost based on the hour spent. I know that that's like a terrible answer, and I'm totally dancing around it, but that's the real answer, right? I will say that the clients I've worked with so far, I don't have a single one that I think's going to meet their to-not-exceed.
And what was that amount?
Well, varied. I mean, it was basically, I think we went in with 2% of ARPA spend for each one of those.
Was it Ann Arbor?
What?
Ann Arbor?
No, no. City of Detroit would be one, for instance, that's not, you know, going to happen there. And then, a lot of the counties around here, including Saginaw County, I don't perceive that happening right now. That being said, I've got a client, or a colleague who's working with a client, that they want to do an enormous broadband expansion, and he's been tasked to go and pull all the providers together and create kind of an economic analysis of the whole thing. They're having a discussion of, do we want to increase that cap? So, it's, my biggest answer to this is, it's a conversation all the time, and my other big belief is, no surprises. I'm not going to surprise you, you don't surprise me, and everyone can kind of talk through each thing and decide, is this the right choice for you, right?
So, if we were to go into contract, it would be a set percentage?
No, it would be a to-not-exceed, right? So, it's an hourly rate. So, let's say I'm your project manager, and let's say we're just doing basic things, and then I need to bring in a couple other people, so all of those people have their hourly rates, and I just, we charge by hour that we're actually working on the project, which of course is not full-time, because we're working with a lot of other governments at the same time. And so, we charge per hour that we work on Saginaw.
And then, did Guide House work with the CARES Act as well with other municipalities?
Yeah.
Prior to that, what did Guide House do?
So, prior to that, Guide House was actually PWC's public sector, and PWC spun that out so that we are, we were only a public sector, and then we became public-private when we served heavily regulated industries like healthcare and energy. So, that's kind of our area, government, healthcare, energy.
That's Pricewaterhouse. Great. Where's your headquarters at?
Headquarters is in DC, or outside of DC, Tysons.
Okay. And then, also, you would be reporting to whom?
Probably Tim. So, that's Tim's question, not mine.
Yeah, so, just to add to this, and break down what we have here, I know most of you are familiar with what we have in staffing, but for individuals here who deal with federal grants, we have very few people. So, we have the finance director, we talked about Lori Brown, but who is responsible for treasury, water billing, income tax, assessing payroll, accounts payable, time is limited, Yolanda Jones, Director of OMB, but right now, and every year, they're in the budget process, which takes up most of their time. She has, I think, one analyst who's been here for a year-plus, and one who is brand-new. And then, we have, as you know, a contract with Plant Moran for our controller services, but that is basic, everyday accounting, so, and everything that entails, but that doesn't include all of this new work. So, that's your team right there. So, this is all new, a lot of regulations. So, in order to manage something like this, it all depends on what we want to do with it. So, if council said, hey, we know water and sewers are a liable expense, go ahead and do $40 million in water and sewer projects, we could probably manage that internally. But from what we've talked about, that's not what we want to do. So, in that case, we need additional assistance to the current staffing that we have. So, we talked about it, we, you have two options, really, you have a, you can contract with consulting, or you could hire people. Hiring people, you would probably want to hire CPAs and grant specialists, federal grant specialists. That's going to be expensive, and it's difficult to recruit accountants to work in, for local units of government. So, we went to Plant and Moran initially to see if we could modify that contract, and they referred us to Guide House, because of their work with other local units in Michigan and throughout the county. They said they're the specialists, so that led to this discussion. So, with that, I would say, ultimately, all the staff reports up to me, but they would probably be working really closely with Lori, and Yolanda, and me, and probably our local Plant Moran staff that we have here, and some additional staff that would be working with Guide House through that contract. Now, the proposal we have, as David mentioned, it is not to exceed, and there's probably, if I recall, seven to 10 classifications for employees with hourly rate, which he said is required under other federal, the time and materials hourly billing.
So, Tim?
Yeah.
Also, so that would be an hourly rate, as you identified, correct? Working with Plant Moran, and then the city. Do you have any stance currently on the behavioral health care that's outlined in the final rules from the American Rescue Plan, in terms of how it can help Saginaw?
Do I have a take on it?
I mean, in terms of how it can help Saginaw? Because it's outlined, I think, over 30 times.
Yeah.
And then, we do have mental health issues that plague the city.
Mm-hmm.
And what was your stance on that?
I did, I don't have a huge stance on it as of now. We tried to do some work in the Upper Peninsula on this, which is a different, obviously, setting than this, and the problem we ran into is simply, which you're going to find in a lot of areas, is couldn't find people that actually do the work. So, we had the money, we had the interest, but how are we going to actually build something out? So, we started talking about building out kind of a telehealth solution to behavioral health, but that's kind of as far as we got on that, and that's where we are right now. I will say, I've got other colleagues who've done significant behavioral health build-out, I believe in Akron and in Dayton, in some of the work they've been doing there. So, in that case, I would bring those people in and say, what is your, what is the model you've built out right now, and how would we want to maybe look at that model for Saginaw? What worked, what didn't? That's one thing I do want to add, is that, you know, we're all learning as we go on this one, and as I said, there wasn't even a final rule until a couple weeks ago. So, you know, we're all just along for the ride, and we just want to make it as comfortable for you as possible as we go through it. And then, hopefully, again, as we see everyone else try things, that you aren't trying things alone.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, so.
And then, just two more questions, real quick, please. With the premium pay, because that is one of the four buckets, is it your stance that when it states that the chief executive officer is able to label people as essential workers, although they are not public workers, that they are deserving of a premium pay? Is that how you interpret the final rules?
Deserving, deserving is a subjective term, but it does say that they can get paid, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
I have known no one who's tried to do it due to the administrative burden.
Thank you. I'm sorry?
So, I've done significant premium pay programs with governments in Michigan so far.
Through ARPA?
Through ARPA, but I've done none with private sector, non-public workers.
But now that the final rules have come out?
The administrative burden of working with those companies, because you have a significant administrative burden to define people's incomes.
Yes.
So, going through that whole process, just no one's wanted to touch it.
Because it's too much of a?
It's too much. It's too much. Going to, you know, if you're saying, hey, we want to, you know, the people who kept Walmart open while COVID was raging, well, we really think they should get premium pay. Okay, now, you've got to deal with Walmart and ask them to get all of their salary data that's private, that they may not want?
But say that we're not dealing with a corporation like Walmart.
Yeah.
Say we're dealing with something similar, something smaller.
Sure.
That's low-scale, that has the ability to?
Point of order. We are getting off track. The presentation is on whether or not we need their assistance.
I think there's been a motion approved by council on this topic.
Okay.
I think there's been a motion approved by council on this topic, so I would recommend.
My personal privilege, I don't see how any of these questions are off-topic. I think these are questions that they brought up in their presentation, these had to do with the final rules. These are valid questions that are not off-topic, that are not straying far away from the path that this gentleman's able to speak about.
I believe council passed a motion postponing indefinitely any conversation about premium pay for anybody other than city employees?
I have additional questions about infrastructure and water. I can move forward, but these are not?
That's my recommendation.
Okay. So, in terms of investment in water, sewage, and broadband, have you worked with any locality to expand or use those funds to be able to help specifically low and moderate-income individuals?
So, broadband, absolutely. That's been a big push that we've really been working on, both kind of from the state level and from the county level. So, that's going full force forward. We've kind of applied a new approach to that, where we're trying to understand, you know, kind of economic response, and valuing, for instance, you know, school-aged children at a different level, people who have no access at a different level. And then, also broadband is not just access, right? It's also affordability. So, understanding someone may have broadband, but can they afford it, and then creating programs around that. So, that's kind of broadband. In terms of sewer, no one has touched sewer yet, but there have been people within our firm who have definitely dealt with lead pipe with ARPA funds and dealt with lead pipe programs. We also anticipate, and I think we've already seen the state move forward using funds for lead pipe programs.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Shosha.
I'm good. Thank you.
Some of my questions have been answered, but I wanted to ask you, I liked the last paragraph where you said what the services may include, and that'd be assisting administration and federal and state grant monies. You know, like the manager said, you know, for us to hire a staff to do what you're doing, and then let them go after they get through, you know, just kind of be kind of messy. You guys are doing this, you got, how many, 12,000 employees all over? So, you guys have been doing this, so you know what you need to be doing, and not only that, you guys know how to get other federal and state grant monies to assist the monies that we are getting for some of the projects. So, will you be working with, say, for instance, we got a pool of different entities that's going to get some of the money? Would your services be rendered to each one of those services if they need you for assistance with finding other grants? Or say, for instance, a community center, or any other type of things that the monies can go to, could you, would you assist those people getting grants?
Would I assist them in getting grants?
Yes.
That becomes a question of, if it's within the scope of the contract, we could, but we'd need to make sure, I'd need to look at the fine print on the contract again to answer that question. Can I say this much, is that, you know, we spoke with one entity that wanted to, they basically just want to give out grants to all their not-for-profits, and they want their not-for-profits to work with the community to spend the money. So, we would be available to walk the not-for-profits through any of their pain points around compliance, around documentation, around project management, as work for the county, right? And another example would be, you know, one of the counties, I'm working with all of their non-entitlement units, which are your small villages and townships, and I am training those village and townships on how to use their money, also trying to get them to collaborate on how to use their money. But that's being paid for by the county under this contract. Does that answer your question?
In a way, it did, in a way, it didn't. But what I'm saying, like, say, for instance, you gave monies to a certain spot, do your umbrella of employees have grant writers that can assist those entities with getting more federal or state dollars to help out their project?
Right. I think I know what you're saying. I don't think it's within the scope of the contract. I think that's the tricky thing there, whereas what would be within the scope of the contract is, hey, here's a grant.
Okay.
That you're eligible for, you should be aware of this, you know?
Go for it, huh?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I would envision similarly, if we are talking about a specific kind of project, they could also advise the city to say, hey, you know, say you are talking about some kind of foreclosure prevention program, they might say, you can leverage your dollars.
Yes.
Because the state has $10 million available to local units to help with that as well, so you could enhance your own, your own awards that you have, or build that pool that you have available.
That's what I was hoping, that all the entities do get this money, that they be able to enhance it by getting other grants, because they have some money to start up with, so. That's good to hear. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm like?
You got a question?
That's what I like. No one?
So, that's really what we want, what we want to know. We do have the proposal that we'd like to bring forward to council at the next meeting, so we wanted to have them present what they offer. Our staff, I think we agree that this is a good direction for us to go, and we wanted to make sure council had some kind of consensus before we bring this to you at the next meeting.
Do we have a tentative contract?
No, we have a proposal that I think is, I don't, we haven't provided it to the city attorney yet, it's been what we've done. In preparation for the next meeting, we would have that go through our process that we do with all of our contracts.
Okay. Thank you.
And I do have, just a question for the city manager. I like how they did the services may include, the proposal that we received, will they kind of have, like, those particular services, or like the one that's provided in the presentation?
I'll have Yolanda answer that, since she's been working more closely with them.
Yes, the proposal will outline what they will provide.
Thank you.
City of Saginaw told you, it's a new season, we're walking into it. My fellow council persons, this is what we've been trying to say all the time to you guys. We can do this. City of Saginaw, we're here, we can do this. We've got the guidance, we've got the momentum, we just need to begin to move forward. I thank you, and Melissa, is it Melissa?
Yes, sir.
I thank you both so much. I'm like, I'm like Councilwoman Sylvia down there, I like you. I liked you when I read about you, you know, but this is new, and anything new, there's always going to be reluctance. So, I'm praying that we do something, because it's time to move. It's time for us to start going forward, it just is.
Well, I think what, and I think council has been acting very deliberately through the process, and I think that's what's brought us to this point, because you've outlined, this is the direction you want to go. You want to, you want to do revenue loss, you want to do some city projects, you want You want to, you want to do revenue loss, you want to do some city projects, you want to allocate grants, particularly the granting portion is where we need the most assistance.
Where we need the most.
And I think you'll, if you, um, see a little bit more from them or you look online, their, um, scoring programs, I think are very good to help us determine, because you're gonna have a lot of requests, uh, like David and Melissa said, and what are you going to use to allocate those funds? So I think a scoring process that outlines, okay, these items fall into your, um, what you're approving in the budget every year as your goals and objectives and what you did at strategic planning, I, I think that lines up well, so I think, I think this is a good direction given the work that you've already done. I would, I would say you guys have been working on this for, leading up to this point for some time.
I have a question for Tim. Because, because of what you just said made me think of this question. So would it, and you and I kind of spoke about this, so would it be correct to say that possibly, perhaps, a bit perhaps, um, we have not technically, uh, announced we're accepting proposals? But when you get into what you just said, uh, what needs to be in there, what's looking for the scoring system, et cetera, some people are gonna have to go back to the drawing board in regards to their proposals.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, I, I think so and, um, it, what has, because what has come in has varied so widely, um, that to me is kind of a, a notice of interest and application, but because of the fact of, of the final rules coming out and the fact that we are, we would ask, uh, Guide House to help us develop our teachers, okay, these proposals are gonna have to match up to those, uh, review points. So, um, we have everything that's come in and we would likely contact those people and say, hey, now these, this is what we're requiring for a formal proposal. We realize you, you submitted an interest in the, in submitting a project, so we're inviting you to come back and write that proposal. That's, that's correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
So, um, my question relates to the lost revenue and it's kind of a question comment, but will the final number be worked with, with the proposal potentially Guide House or do you have that number?
That is, it's in their proposal to develop it. We have an idea and, um, previously, uh, Yolanda's office did develop that and so, and Plant and Moran reviewed that as well as part of our contract, but I think for the formal calculation, um, to be, to make sure that we are in compliance, I would, that is in their proposal, that calculation. I think right now with the final rules, with some of the changes, it's probably higher than it was when Yolanda's staff and Plant and Moran calculated it, but that, um, that would be, and I know that for a fact that's in the proposal.
And what was that number?
Uh, it was, you, you have various options now, um, but it was around $5 million a year, but you'd have to recalculate that every year based upon your revenues.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I had, uh, two. With the committee, would they be working with the committee as well?
Uh, I certainly would like them to do that. They do have in their proposal, um, community engagement.
Mm-hmm.
And I think council's done quite a bit of work on that, but to help, um, that committee, I think that's another phase of that community engagement as we bring opinions from various communities of interest. So, um, I think that guidance during the meeting, during that committee's meeting would be helpful for them and, and ultimately council in the long run.
So in terms of community engagement, would they be sitting in on the committee meetings and then also doing additional community engagement, like a neighborhood association meeting or some type of other outside engagement?
If council wants to pay for that, yeah. Yeah, that, so I, I would, um...
For free. Yeah, right? We're here.
Yeah, they, I would definitely recommend, um, having them work with the committee, um, just for that guidance and they can offer more, um, experience with it than our staff would be. We're planning to have our staff available, but the, the folks from Guide House would have more experience to answer some of the questions like you were asking from various communities. But if there are, if council envisioned some other outreach, um, I'm sure that they could develop something like that. I don't know, uh, David wanted to talk to that.
Yeah, I, I, I work closely with the city of Detroit on, uh, getting their community engagement up and running, which was quite robust. Uh, we did about 60 meetings over 30 days, um, both, uh, digitally and in person when possible, um, last summer. So it was right at the top, this thing rolled out and they went right in. Um, so, uh, there was some online polling, there was some in-person polling, there was a lot of idea generation and then a lot of just basically prioritizing, right? So the mayor laid out a set of strategic priorities and then everyone kind of assisted with, uh, or the community engaged on helping him prioritize those different high-level topics. And so that's how we moved forward with that.
And then when you say the city of Detroit, it's every district with this?
Yes.
Okay. So you're working with every, every individual city council member?
The, you know, and city of Detroit is a pretty robust kind of district, um, you know, leadership and infrastructure there, so we were leveraging the existing kind of human infrastructure to, you know, basically every single community meeting that happens is, just became an ARPA meeting, you know, over that 30-day period.
Yeah. We have that same fever here.
There you go.
Uh, and then it lasts for the city manager. With lost revenue, would it behoove us to look at lost revenue prior to 2019 or is that just part of the ARPA rules with the equation to look at 2019?
It's all in the rules, the equation, where you can start and where you end. It's all defined.
Incorrect. So does it just start at 2019? Doesn't go prior to that?
No, but does not go prior to that.
What, but I'm saying if we were try, trying to get a, a fuller picture of lost revenue that had plagued the city for X amount of years?
Oh, that's a, that's a long issue depending on what your, your reason for revenue loss is. We have revenue loss related to reduced, um, revenue sharing. We have revenue loss versus based on the tax cap, which some, some of them are very difficult to determine just because, you know, one action can impact another. So I think for purposes of this contract engagement, it would be just for the ARPA, the ARPA dollars, so it would be the 2019. We do have other data that we've done for, um, I think Mayor Branch had us work quite a bit on some rev, other revenue loss and so did, um, Mayor Clark in the past, so we do have some of that information too.
Because I had requested that information, I think 2012 to 2001. And if I can get that information, that would be helpful, at least for myself to make an informed decision.
Yeah, we'll touch ba, we can touch based on that, just based upon what type of revenue you are looking at.
Cool. Thank you so much. Thank you.
So Mr. David, I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
We are going to roll out and I think about it, we're getting ready to do it. Hopefully it will pass tonight. We have a committee. How many, how many other communities are reaching out to their community for input that you work with?
Well, you're required by law to do community engagement if you're above, and I'm totally gonna blank what that cap is, but you're above it. So, um, you're required and you're required to make that transparent and public, um, the outcome of that engagement. Um, so to your, to answer your question, everyone above the kind of smaller counties that we're working with.
So that's a good thing, right?
That's a good thing.
Okay, then we'll make sure.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. City manager, if nobody has any more questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Guide and house, guide and post, am I getting it wrong?
Guide and house.
Guide and house, thank you so much.
That's all I have for this evening, Mayor.
Okay, that takes us now to the consent agenda.
The agenda has been available at City Hall and on, on the city's webpage or add on SGTV, channel 191. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, leaving room for exceptions. Thank you both so much.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved. Do we have any exceptions?
I'd say an exception for number two, just for information-wise.
Is there any more exceptions? Let's take a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Madam Clerk.
Item number two, approval filing of the 2022 single lot assessment tax rule in the office of the city clerk for public inspect examination. And that city council call public hearing to be held on February 21st, 2022. Councilmember Flores.
Thank you. Uh, can we explain to the public exactly what this would be doing and how would it, it would influence the, the meeting called at that time? It's during the council meeting, correct?
Please.
Yes, it's held during public hearings on the regular meeting of the council on that day. And then we can hear, um, any objections. The residents that are on the tax rule for special odd, single lot assessments are notified by letter that they can submit a written comment or appear at the public hearing. And that is the date and the time. They can come and present their objections to the council at that time. And then that, those objections are taken back, we look into those, the documents, I share that information with them, they look into that to make a determination if it stands or if it should be adjusted. We review that with the city manager and at the following meeting, he makes his recommendations back to city council.
Great. And that this, it's something that we do regularly?
We do it every year, yeah. We're, we're required to do this, yeah.
Okay. I didn't remember it last year. Must have been daydreaming. All right, well, cool. Uh, motion to approve, it's in, uh, item number two.
It's been moved, I need a second.
Second.
It's been moved a second, any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Madam Clerk.
We are now at board, commission and committee reports.
Do I have anyone who would like to report out on boards or commissions that you might have attended the last couple of weeks or longer?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I, uh, attended the airport board meeting, uh, last week and, uh, everything is going good. They, uh, they're getting grants and, uh, things of that nature to expand, uh, runways and to build, um, shelters for the snow vehicles and stuff like that. And they got some, uh, other issues with PFAS, the, uh, stuff that's, uh, coming off of the, the, uh, salt and stuff like that, so. It's just regulations that the government gotta go through, the airport gotta go through the government regulations, so. My report.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Mayor, I just want to report that, uh, the planning commission, which I sit on, met over the last two weeks and there was a, uh, application to rezone, uh, over in the Cathedral District at 510 South Warren, uh, from what's restricted office to business two. And so this is quite a jump. Uh, at the time, the planning commission did not take up the application and they did just let the, uh, the application die. Um, the reasons for that was we felt that that was just not a neighborhood that should be rezoned to that and once we do rezone that neighborhood, then that zone does stick and that a particular zoning did allow for, uh, quite a few businesses that could come into a residential neighborhood that they thought was not... Um, it's not that we don't and did not want to and don't look for opportunity for the RICO system to have a house in the city. Um, and we, we welcome that, we wanted to work with them. It's just that putting that type of a zone into the Cathedral District, we didn't feel was good.
The other thing was, was that I also said on the committee, is that once you open up the floodgate, the floodgate continues to go. There are a lot of things that we did and I have since talked to the city manager and we talked about it because I, it was for a homeless shelter. It's not that we didn't want the homeless shelter, but when you rezone, our chairperson is here, good to see her, for our committee. Uh, when you start rezoning, if anything happens, it stays that same way until you change it again. So it, it's not that we didn't want the homeless shelter, it was that the location and the timing was bad, just like when they came to Horton Jones. You can't just come in a person's neighborhood and re, just redo it. It's called talk to the stakeholders, like we're doing with ARPA. You're the stakeholders. We need to ask you what you want. Now you tell us what you want to see and have. So that was a heated meeting, it wasn't, it didn't go well for some, but for us, it's an opportunity for us to at least try to work with that, that facility, to try to find a location to where everybody's happy.
Uh, just a little bit more information from my colleagues and this is, this is from the actual application that it came to the planning commission. Uh, the planning commission has to determine if conditions that have, have changed that warrant the rezoning request to increase the commercial intensity of that block and/or would the rezoning of the substantial, have a substantial impact in the surrounding area. Also on the application, it was noted that this action of rezoning this property is not consistent with the city's master plan and it would be considered what they call spot zoning. So thank you.
So that's the end of our report. To make a long story short, because I see people nodding, it's like, okay, what did they just say? There were a number of reasons why the plan, why the planning committee, why we did not approve that. And, and we are willing, you know, I don't know if we was in order, but we're willing to help try to find them a location for. And we spoke to them and told them, we're not against homeless shelters. We just said kids, businesses, elderly, let's think about that. Yes.
Is this an existing entity or a new entity trying to come in to the city?
It's a new, it, it's an existing building where they want to put something that would be relatively new in that area.
No, I'm saying the entity in and of itself, is it new to the city?
No.
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay.
No, no, no.
All right, thank you.
No, and just to back up the mayor with the mayor's saying, it's not that we, like you said, it's not that we don't or wouldn't want the shelter, it's just the zone that we have to get it. It opens up a huge can of worms and one of them, you could put a hotel, a motel on the department store. Once it's zoned, let's say they fail or they pull out, now it's zoned. And so this would be coming onto Warren Street in the Cathedral District.
I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any more reporting? That was good. Madam Clerk, I guess it's my turn again, right?
Well, your next order of business is appointment of board and commission members.
Young people, we have 25 appointments. Mayor appoint or council appointment, and I'm, we're gonna do them all at one time. If you have any objection or extensions, please say so. Yes, ma'am.
I, I have some objections.
You need a motion first.
Yeah, I was waiting on that.
Allow me for exceptions.
And I'm allowing for exceptions.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the appointments.
I'll second that.
It's been moved a second, open for discussion. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, are there any extensions?
Extens, exceptions.
Exceptions, look, exceptions too. Are there any exceptions?
Yes. Um, several. It would be, um, all, mo, all of them that I have exception to are for the American Rescue Plan Act Committee. And that would be, and after I say this, I would like to give my reasons why, please. Uh, Kevin Albasta, and if I'm saying the right, the name incorrectly...
Why are you saying number 12?
Give us the number.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I looked on the wrong, number 12.
Is that the only one?
Number 15. No, I have five. Number 15. Number 16. Number 17. Number 23. And that would be it.
Are there any more exceptions?
Yeah, I had one for number 13 and number 24. And then...
13 and 24?
Yes. And then number, I apologize, 14. And number 19.
What was the last one? I didn't hear you.
19.
Okay. So I got a motion on the floor, leaving room for those exceptions. Everybody that was not in. And can you call them off again? Because somebody missed something.
The exceptions that I have is 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 19, 23, and 24.
Is that correct?
Yes.
The ones I have are correct.
Okay. I need a motion, leaving room, well, I've got the motion. I need to take a vote on leaving room for exceptions with the following exceptions. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Did I do it right? Okay. All those opposed?
Okay.
Madam Clerk.
First exception is number 12, the mayoral appointment of Kevin Albasta to the American Rescue Plan Act Advisory Committee for the term to expire upon completion of the ARPA program. That was Councilmember Lamar Sylvia.
Okay. And this, can I kind of conjoin this so I can be soon or do I have to go each one? Because it's all the same reason. Can I do that? Or have to go each one?
No.
For exceptions, because she...
She's asking you.
For my exceptions, the reason I have exceptions are all the same reason. Can I do that as one? Or do I need to go to each one? I don't have a...
Yeah, then let me state your exceptions. It was number 15. That was the appointment of Veronica Horn. Number 16 was the appointment of James Hernandez. Number 17 is the appointment of Sharon Lehman Case. And the appointment of Fenobia Dallas, all to the American Rescue Plan Act.
Yes.
And number 12.
Yes, and number 12.
Yeah, and I already read number 12.
Okay. The reason, let me say, I think they are great people, would do well on the committee. But per our committee rules and what we were looking for in regards to the ARPA committee, these persons I do not think would fit in any of the categories that we specified in what we wanted for the committee. From my understanding and meeting today, they do not live in the city. They do not have a business in the city. They do not, they are not a director or CEO on a major nonprofit board. So unless we do something else or get another committee, it's nothing personal, but they don't meet the criteria for the ARPA committee, in my opinion, and from what I read.
Anyone else?
Sorry, are we on 12?
We're on discussion.
Oh. So just to make sure. So the five that she has stated, they are all city either or city residents, they own a business in the city, or they are a manager-director of a nonprofit in the city of Saginaw?
I believe so.
Okay. So the number 12 person, they meet all of those criteria specifically?
You don't have to meet all of them. You have to meet one of them.
Or one of them. All right. Thank you for correcting me on that. So number 12, this is, this person fits which criteria? Are we able to say that?
It's a nonprofit.
Nonprofit.
He's a CFO for a nonprofit.
Are we not able to say the nonprofit?
Covenant Healthcare.
It's a nonprofit?
Going to Covenant?
Yes, it is.
Both hospitals are nonprofits.
There we go. Both hospitals are nonprofits. Both of them also have foundations that are nonprofit foundations.
That, to me, that don't sound right. We said that you are on the board, not that you're the CEO of the hospital. A nonprofit, now that's new to me. And that's nice that Covenant is a nonprofit. But one thing I want to say, we want to make sure, I do, that the citizens of Saginaw are being treated fairly, this committee is made up fairly, and anything else I wouldn't, I personally would not stand for.
Let me say this. Since it's a mayor appointment, I'm going to serve you. This is the first group that we picked. This did not have to do with met all of our guidelines. All they said was they had to fit in one category.
Right.
This is not a he fight them, they fight me. That's not what this was about. It was about looking at the 26 applicants that I had and who could bring us some value to the table. Now, if I had my way, and the team will tell you, I kept going overboard, wanting to add people, making the number bigger than 15. Because the decision was basically, I'm on it. It's on me. The group that was picked, the 15 people that were picked, it is diversity, it is equitable, and it can work. I can't change or make anybody understand where we need to go with this. It's like, we have a task, we have a job. And so whatever the board's pleasure is, I agree with it. That's why I say my heart stays heavy continuously on this board. It shouldn't be that way. It should not be that way. We're here, I'm here, I'm a servant. I'm here to serve the people. I can't serve them and us too. So I choose to serve the city. So I understand, and I guess, everybody's entitled to their opinion. And so if we decline these six, seven people today, then what do we do? What's our next step? Madam Clerk, what's the next step?
It would go back to you for your mayoral appointment review.
And I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it the same way, unless you advise me to do something different. The way that we did it this time is the way that it's always done. It was not intentionally that the people that got picked, got picked. It was like, they can service and help us stay controlled, dah 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 dah. I don't know. Yes, ma'am?
Finish, please. It's nothing personal at all.
Oh, I don't take it personally.
When I read the, I'm not talking to you specifically. I'm saying these people, I know some of these people. And I know they would be good probably for the committee. But from what we agreed on as a council, it appears that they do not fit. Now, to me, Covenant Healthcare and St. Mary's Hospital being a nonprofit, I never knew it. So today I'm learning something. Because I would scratch them out, and that's why I was scratching them out, because of that. So the best thing is to get understanding. So instead of going to, just like, they're a nonprofit. I still don't know. You all say they're a nonprofit, and you said they had to be the CEO or the director of a nonprofit. So if they fit that category, that, those were my issues.
Okay.
That none of these people, okay, so we have, let me look at these.
I don't know, Monique, you had so many. I lost count.
I had five.
I lost count.
So...
You had 12, 15.
I had, I had five.
Right.
I have five.
Five exceptions.
Right.
So now are you...
I'm just want to finish up. So and also, like, you were saying, like, so where do we go if we cross some of those out? We have a total of 26. If some came after that, I don't think we ought to just take it. I mean, I understand now that they're nonprofit. But if they weren't and they didn't make the criteria, why wouldn't we go back to the rest of the people that are on the list that put in applications? Would we not do that?
That was not what I said.
Okay.
I said, what's next?
Okay. So let me go...
Because I know that I've got to go back to the list that I left, to those 11 individuals. Those 11 individuals' application will stay on file. And I've been encouraging people to still put their applications in.
Okay. So is Saginaw Valley, okay, is Saginaw Valley State University a nonprofit?
All schools, I know.
She lives in the city. I believe she lives in the city.
That's a city resident.
She's a city resident. She sits on boards of commission with us?
Okay.
Zenobia.
Can I just ask this? Did all of her exceptions meet the criteria that's been put out?
Yes.
Yes.
So the chamber as well is a nonprofit?
Chamber is a nonprofit.
I'm learning today. Thank you very much.
We got a question right here.
I think to continue discussion, you need a motion, mayor.
Excuse me. No, she didn't.
Do we have a motion?
And if you're going to talk about me, say it to me.
Okay.
We not having that. I'm not having that.
Excuse me.
I ain't doing, I ain't doing. I ain't here for that.
Do we have a question on the floor?
I've got to get, I've got to get some clarity.
You want me to no meeting with me?
Clark, may this information available?
Okay.
You know what she made vague to me? I'm speaking to me, of me. You said she made it a vague...
Excuse me. Point of order!
Get it together.
Excuse me! I apologize to y'all.
I apologize to them, like I said.
I need everybody quiet now. Please, please. There's a motion on the, no.
No, there's not. You need a motion.
I need a motion on the floor.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Wait, wait, wait. Michael, she's saying something.
If you want to continue discussion, you need a motion with...
I need a motion to continue discussion?
No. No.
I motion to accept the ones that I had.
All five of them?
Number 20, yes.
All five.
Thank you, Monique.
Thank you, Monique.
You're very welcome.
You helped me. Thank you. Do I get a second?
You have.
I got it. It's moved a second. Any more discussion? All those in fa, I'm sorry.
I just want to say something to my colleagues at the table. We passed a resolution for these...
No, that has nothing to do with this. Okay. So we got a motion on the floor?
Yep.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you. And we have...
Mr. Flores.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Do you want to do all three or you want me?
Individual.
Individual. So the first one is 13, the mayoral appointment of Amy Spatafor to the American Rescue Plan Act Advisory Committee. Councilman Flores.
Thank you, Clerk. The Clerk did allow myself and Councilwoman Lamar Sylvia to look at all the applications that had come through, including those that were not accepted this afternoon. So thank you for that time. Yet, with the application of a few individuals, including number 13, she had proposed and campaigned specifically to the council for ARPA dollars for her own committee that he is representing. So I think that there is a conflict of interest there. And that due to that conflict of interest, that there would be a better candidate for this committee other than this gentlewoman. So I motion to table number 13 until the next meeting, so other individuals can inform themselves as well on this vote. So I table to, I voted, motion to table...
I believe tabling, it just moves it to later in the meeting?
Postpone until the, postpone until the next city council meeting.
There's a motion on the floor. Can I get a second? There's a motion on the floor. Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion.
I have a question.
Yes.
Are there, are there individuals that were approved or currently on this that have also expressed interest in ARPA dollars?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Comment. Everybody, everybody that's on these committees, everybody that's working on the committee may have a special interest or something that they like to see go through. We want people to be on the committee that want this money to go to different charities. That's what we want. These people are just coming back giving us suggestions on the ones that they think that we should put the monies in certain pockets. We got all our pockets already picked. All we want them to do is say, hey, I think this would be a nice one, this would be a nice one, that would be a nice one. So it don't matter if they want to, we want people to come here and help us out who got interest in the city. And that person may not even, their vote is only a suggestion to the city council. The city council is the ones that are going to be the ones that are going to pick the people to put the money where we want to put it. So I don't care who's on the committee, and I don't think it matters. As long as they got an interest in helping out this city, I want them to be on these committees. So I don't think that that, Mr. Flores, about other people that's being on the committee, we want them on the committee. So that's my take on that.
To be clear, with the rules that we have for committees and commissions, do we already have stipulations in place? Because I know for us, it's, we just can't vote on it if it, if we would financially benefit from it. I just want to confirm, are those same rules in place for this committee where if she were to be appointed and they were to discuss her organization, that she would not be able to?
They won't be discussing the organization. So I think there are some misconceptions that have gone around about the committee. And I know actually, the city attorney drafted the resolution, and I support, support it. But the committee, I think what Mayor Portembaal said, is to help prioritize the buckets that you all set up. They will not be allocating funds to any specific groups. So maybe a person may advocate for, hey, you know, I think the arts are important for youth development. That would be youth development category, in my opinion. Or I'm not sure where the arts fits in those other buckets. But certainly I would expect that people would advocate for that. There are other people on here that I know who've talked to me, and I'm sure talked to you all about, hey, you know, my, my interest is youth recreation, which is, is fine. But as part of this group, you're not going to allocate money to organization XYZ that does youth programming. You might say, hey, youth programming is important, and council should allocate 50% of the money to that. But, but you will not be allocating the actual funds.
I didn't have any misconception about the, what the power of the committee is able to do. I have sat and listened to multiple individuals, some of whom I agree with the mayor about appointing on there. But those people have not specifically asked for funds to their particular organization. And they had not campaigned to the council for ARPA dollars, and now sit on the committee that are going to make recommendations. I'm sorry, Mr. Bowles, but I will point to you. You've not spoken of any specific amounts. But this individual has.
There are other people that have been approved that are on organizations that have submitted proposals.
And, and this is the one individual, and there are two more, that I have an issue with because there's a clear conflict of interest. And this is not simply my own opinion. It is coming from other constituents. I've been on the phone for most of the day prior to that MLive article that came out. But this is a clear conflict of interest. It is to me. I will not be voting in favor of that appointment. There are other individuals that would be able to take her place that had not asked for a specific amount to their specific organization. And that is where I stand. And so that's why I bring this exception up.
That's one thing about democracy. Everybody can speak their piece. Okay, Monique and then we're going to, I'm calling for the vote.
What I'd like to say, make a correction. I did meet with Ms. Janet, but I did not look over any applications. So that, that was a mistake in words. I looked over the names and how they would represent our community and how they fit into the categories that we had chosen. So I didn't look over anybody's... So I didn't look over anybody's, uh, applications.
So we're gonna call for a vote. It's been moved to, I'm sorry.
Two more.
Pardon me?
Two more exceptions.
Now, you have a motion on the floor.
Right.
To postpone this appointment until the next meeting.
Right.
That's what we're gonna do. That's what I want.
And so we're taking for this one, the postponing. I'm calling for the vote.
For, till the, so I just went on the...
So it's in favor of postponing it?
To the next meeting or later in the meeting?
Postponing Amy Spatafor's appointment.
Okay, to another meeting or this meeting?
To postpone it until the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
I think the most conscious way probably to do it, so that we all clear, is do a roll call vote.
Just do a voice vote first and determine if we need...
All those in favor, that's right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Of postponing, okay? That's what you voted for, for postponing. All of those who disagree signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Lamar Sylvia?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Nay.
Councilmember Bench?
Nay.
Mayor Pro Tem Balls?
No.
Councilmember Scherzer?
No.
Councilmember Ostache?
No.
Councilmember Flores?
Aye.
Councilmember Copeland?
Nay.
Mayor Moore?
Nay.
We have two yes, one nay. Motion is denied. I move to approve mayoral, mayoral appointment number thirteen.
I'll second that.
It's been moved to second. Didn't we just vote for that? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
We did the roll call vote. We don't have to do it again, do we?
We need a roll call.
Okay, roll call vote again.
Councilmember Williams?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Bench?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Balls?
Yes.
Councilmember Scherzer?
Yes.
Councilmember Ostache?
Yes.
Councilmember Flores?
Nay.
Councilmember Copeland?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamar Sylvia?
Ye- yes.
Was that a yes?
Oh, yes. Yeah.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We have eight yes, one nay. Motion is approved.
The next one, Madam Clerk, please.
Is item number fourteen. The mayoral appointment of Renee Johnston, American Rescue Plan Act Advisory Committee. Number Flores.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, when I was looking over her application, uh, it, they had ref- in terms of references, you're supposed to put three down. One was the mayor and one was the city manager. So I think that's a clear conflict of interest as well. So I would, uh, vote to postpone this until the next meeting. Motion.
It's, it's a motion on the floor. Is it, can we get a second? There's a motion on the floor to table.
Postpone to the next meeting.
Postpone to the next meeting. Due to conflict of entries. Is there a second on the floor? Is there a second on the floor? Hearing none.
Madam Mayor, I move for the mayoral appointment of, uh, Renee Johnston, number fourteen. I'll second.
It's been moved to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Bench?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Balls?
Yes.
Councilmember Scherzer?
Yes.
Councilmember Ostache?
Yes.
Councilmember Flores?
Nay.
Councilmember Copeland?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamar Sylvia?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We have eight yes, one no. Motion is approved. Our next item, looks like it's nineteen. Mayoral appointment of Hurley Coleman Jr. to the American Rescue Plan Advisory Committee. Councilmember Flores.
Yeah, correct. When I was looking through the applications, he did not list any references, uh, in his application, which seemed to me, uh, was not in standing with the other applicants that had applied. Therefore, I think that there would be a conflict of interest with that. So I motion to postpone his approval and appointment until the next meeting.
No, we've got a motion on the floor. Can I get a second? Can I get a second? Can I get a second? That's been tabled.
Madam Mayor, I move for the mayoral appointment of Hurley Coleman Jr., number nineteen. Bench seconds?
It's been moved to second. Discussion.
This, okay, my question would be, with those applications, is the entire application supposed to be filled out?
It's not required. I mean, if they don't wanna provide the information, they're not required to.
They, information that they don't wanna give you, they don't have to?
Right.
Okay.
I also have one. So, um, if these people were not gonna be approved and the mayor would go back, she would technically be, because this is first come, first served, she's technically just going back to the list that was already the backups. So if the backups weren't people that would technically fill their spot, we still would be somewhat in the same space?
Point of personal privilege, these were not first come, first served. But they were not according to date. There were people that had applied separate from these individuals that did not get, uh, appointed after the fact.
So for, so what, from what the manager sent us, where it said first come, first served?
There were, there were multiple. That, so first we went through, so the second person who applied wasn't, wasn't a city resident, for example.
Gotcha.
We did skip that person.
Thank you.
Down to the next city resident. So it wasn't every person in a row.
Perfect. And so mine is just based off of the remaining list that we have from the, our mayor and team went through and had backups. And correct me if I'm wrong, but if we were not to deny anyone, it wouldn't be, we would just be starting this all over again. We would just be going to who was the backup and next in line. Correct. Okay, thank, I just wanna make sure I ain't crazy. Well, okay, that's why I wanted to make sure. Thank you.
I did ask, could we do a, what I asked him? I'm sorry, city manager. I asked, could we do a backup list?
Right.
So that if anybody got sick and I was told no. But the applications would stay on file.
Right.
And so that was, that was really, that really made me feel good.
So, uh, Madam Mayor, is there a cutoff date? Cause some people may still be...
No, people are still, you got people who are still doing it. Remember, we passed a motion that this thing goes until two thousand and twenty-six?
Yes ma'am.
Okay.
So in between there, God forbid, even me. I could be across the street. Y'all know how y'all wanna get to me. Okay, huh?
So where we at?
Oh.
You got a motion on the floor?
It's a motion on the floor. It was, it's been moved to second. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Monique, don't look at me that.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Ayes have it.
Okay, we have one more. Item number twenty-four, the mayoral appointment of Tina Swanson to the American Rescue Plan Act Advisory Committee. Councilmember Flores.
Thank you, Clerk. Ms. Swanson works for the YMCA, who is that, unless I'm getting someone incorrect. She lists, and I just spoke with her, works with the YMCA, unless I have somebody incorrect. But she communicated to me that she does, and the YMCA has campaigned heavily for, uh, ARPA funds from the city council, both in presentation and on one-to-one. Uh, if there's a different Tina Swanson, then I apologize. But I would motion to postpone this appointment until the next meeting to gather additional information.
I need a second. I need a second. I need a second. Dead issue. Need a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move for the mayoral appointment of Tina Swan, number twenty-four. Bounce to second.
It's been moved to second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
Did I just understand a few minutes ago that it didn't, almost didn't matter or something like that? Can you explain? I'm sorry.
I didn't hear you.
The few minutes ago, was it explained that even though, that wouldn't be a conflict of interest? Let me just put it like that. Is that?
On which one? This one?
This one right here. Meaning, by what was said, what the other previous one, the Mr., uh, I'm sorry, Councilman Flores saying, they said it wouldn't be a conflict of interest?
On her application, I see volunteer at the Y. I didn't see employed. Maybe I didn't see...
I just wanted to make sure.
The employer that... Buyer that we have on the list is, um, Michigan My Health Improvement Alliance.
Well, she volunteers and does work with them at the Y.
Yeah, she still does some work there at the Y. It's not her full-time, but she's with Michigan Health and Improvement Alliance.
So that's a work.
Also does some work at Delta as an adjunct instructor there. And her and her husband do own Le Boos Lounge in the city.
What they own in the city? What?
Le Boos Lounge?
Oh, the Kabo.
Le Boos, they said, right?
Okay, yeah. What's your question answer?
No. No, because I wanna know, is it a conflict of interest? That's my question.
No.
No.
Okay, that's my question.
So, did we answer it?
I'm sorry?
Did we answer it?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
It's been moved to second. Let's call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Roll call vote, please.
Council, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Balls?
Yes.
Councilmember Scherzer?
Yes.
Councilmember Ostache?
Yes.
Councilmember Flores?
No.
Councilmember Copeland?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamar Sylvia?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Bench?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We have eight yes, one nay. Motion is approved.
I think we covered everybody, didn't we?
We did, Mayor.
I thank you guys so much. We are now at...
Ordinance introduction. We do have one tonight. It's to amend the official city map to rezone lots one, two, three, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, of block twenty-five, Gatsby Gallagher and Little's addition of the city of Saginaw, from R-01 restricted office to B-2 general business.
I'm asking if there's a motion to to...
Is there a motion?
Is there a motion?
Introduce.
I'm sorry, Ms. Jan, say that again.
Is there a motion?
Is there a motion? That's what I was gonna say. Is there a motion to move forward? Is there a motion to recommend or deny? Uh, I need a motion to vote.
Second.
Who made the motion?
Who did the motion?
I thought she did. Oh, I...
She's asking.
I can't do a motion.
I made the motion.
Second.
It's been moved to second.
I'm gonna be, oh.
Huh?
Nope, we have to vote.
Hey, discussion.
Oh, we're in discussion? Yeah. Um, can you just read back the, the motion clearly? I just wanna make sure. This is, the motion is to approve the recommendation to deny?
No.
Oh, okay.
It would be a motion to introduce. Your, your motions have to be worded in a positive. So when you vote them down, there are no and are denied.
Okay.
So if you, if you vote yes, then you're approving...
The introduction.
The introduction.
That's all I needed. Thank you.
Yes.
Does everybody have that one?
Yep.
Okay.
Remind you that the council communication for the city manager is to deny this recommendation based on the planning commission's recommendation to deny.
Gotcha.
Does that help you?
Does that help?
No, I'm confused, but I'm all right.
So by denying the action as, as recommended, you'd have to vote no.
Okay, I just wanna get, get a good understanding. So are you saying the city manager is what?
Recommending to deny, just like your council...
To deny? And what did we just do? We just wanna introduce it.
The planning commission's recommendation. Yes, and the planning commission's recommendation is to deny.
Okay.
We, basically, the committee, as long with the city manager, we are denying it.
Okay.
But council has the final say so. So we gotta vote on the floor to introduce or to, to introduce this ordinance. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You did it wrong. You sure you wanna do that?
Did anybody vote no?
Yeah, it...
Oh, okay.
Okay. Anybody object?
Nay.
We need a roll call vote.
We need a roll call vote. Yes ma'am.
Please, Madam Mayor, I, it's comical and it's nice to laugh, but at this point, I'm totally confused. I really am. Are we voting against?
Against. Against.
Say nay.
You say nay.
Say, okay.
You say nay.
We just said yes.
Say nay. I'm not supposed to tell you how to vote, but say nay.
Suggestion, and I will take a suggestion. Thank you very much.
The nay vote will give you where you want to be with the recommendation.
Thank you.
Okay.
It, it was just confusing, the way it's wrote, okay?